I'd like to call this meeting to the order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carrangelo.
Present.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice is also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We're going to start off this evening's report, uh, meeting with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. Congratulations to our three incumbents, Vicki Becker, Barbara Reese, and Jeff Winston, on their reelection to the Board of Education. It was great to see staff and students participating in Halloween events throughout the district. And we got to see some very creative costumes. Congratulations to our October High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and for modeling exceptional character. I would just like to remind everyone that Wednesday, November 24th, is a single-session day. Lunch will be served for students in grades K through 7. Schools will be closed on Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th, in celebration of Thanksgiving. And first-quarter report cards can be viewed online through parent access on Tuesday, November 30th. Hard copies, as always, will be made available at the request of anyone without Internet access. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. And now we have a presentation, the annual student achievement report.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm going to present the DLM and access assessment results. So to begin, I just want to point out that the New Jersey Department of Education warns us to understand these results in context of the pandemic. Significantly impacted the 2020-2021 school year. Results may reflect the unusual circumstances for instruction and assessment. So use the results with caution. Okay, so this slide is reflecting the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment in English Language Arts, which was administered last spring. This is an alternate assessment for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities, whose educational program is not focused on the New Jersey learning standards. For these students, our students taking the DLM, the state assessments are not appropriate, even with accommodations. The DLM allows our students to demonstrate their knowledge in English Language Arts, math, and science. So here on this slide, you see across the bottom the grade level span, and up the side are the number of tested students. We have a total of 56 students taking this exam. The next slide is just a further breakdown of the English Language Arts DLM results Moving on to mathematics, our results here, the grade level spans across the bottom, the different categories that the students place in, advanced, at target, approaching target, and emerging. Again, the same 56 students took this exam last spring. And here is the further breakdown of the mathematics results by grade level. Our next slide is reflecting the results in science. You'll note that only 21 students participated. This assessment was administered fifth, eighth, and 11th graders only. And our breakdown in science by grade level. Our next slide is reflecting the DLM administration breakdown by ethnicity and gender for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. In our efforts to continually meet the needs of all learners in our school district and support our students, the results of the DLM have been shared with parents, teachers, and case managers. The case managers are actively using the results to create individualized programs for our students and reflecting on how a student's overall performance informs his or her IP. The teachers are using this information to guide their instruction, and we are constantly working with Ms. Bond and the special ed team to identify areas of professional development to continue to strengthen that instruction. Moving on, access for Ls was also administered last spring. This is our overall students' performance levels. You can see the six levels at the bottom, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. Access, the test name, stands for assessing comprehension and communication in English state to state. And the acronym Ls at the top, ELLS, stands for English Language Learners. So this test is administered to all K to 12 students who are identified as Ls, an English Language learner, and this includes refusals as well. The access test is anchored in the WIDA English Language Development Standards and monitors students' progress in learning academic English by assessing the four language domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. To note, students must score a composite score of 4.5 to be exited from the program. That would put them in the expanding category. And just so you realize, even after students exit, we still monitor them for two years. This slide depicts the elementary-level Ls performance by grade level. To date, we have 250 English Language learners receiving services, and we have 12 families who have refused services for their, for their child. Just to clarify, L refusals are not enrolled in ESL classes, but they must complete the access testing so that we can monitor their progress. Our next slide is presenting the secondary-level Ls performance by grade level. And here we have a breakdown of the results by ethnicity and gender. And to note, from the time of this assessment, 61 Ls have exited the program, about 22% of the total, which is typical. And our current Ls represent 24 different languages spoken at home. And again, as we continue to support our students, the ESL teachers are differentiating their instruction using the WIDA can-do descriptors. We are providing push-in support for Ls in mainstream classes to help them access the content. We are providing many sheltered instruction workshops on a variety of topics to help mainstream teachers implement strategies to support their current Ls and also recently exited Ls. And we provide an extended school year opportunity for our students. So in conclusion, I'd just like to thank this Board of Education and Dr. Valesky for your unwavering support and commitment to our work in ensuring that each child can reach his or her full potential. Thank you. Questions?
LeWu?
Yes. Thank you very much, Dr. Bulleye. So reading this report, so for the Dynamic Learning Maps, the first English task, the pool number is 56, which means the sample is students, the total student for this test is 56.
Yes.
And then for the sci, say for the science, it's only 21. So if we try to get this by statistic significance, we need to have a larger pool so we can know to reflect the true situation of the target group. So why you have this only 21 students in this test and 56 students in the English Language in this test? Is, are the only students in this program, or is something else preventing you from testing more students?
The English Language Arts and the math results are the 56 students who are eligible to take this test, those in our self-contained programs with significant cognitive disabilities. The science represents 21 students because it's only administered in grades 5, 8, and 11. The English Language Arts and the mathematics were administered in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 11. That's why there were more students there.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Bulleye, this survey understands that students in the N, the sample that was that were tested, they were the eligible students for these assessments?
Correct.
Right.
Students who will not be taking the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Susanna, then Barbara, then Jeff.
Um, thank you, Dr. Bulleye. I have one question about, you mentioned that 12 students refuse to participate, or the parents refuse to have students participate in the ELL program. And I'm curious, the reasons as to why a parent would refuse?
Uh, we've heard many different reasons, personal reasons, varied from, you know, they want full immersion, they want their child just in English totally. They don't want their child pulled out to receive any special services or any special supports. There was a time where we didn't offer an ESL program in all of the schools, so they didn't want their child not to be able to attend their homeschool, but we've rectified that, and we do offer that program now. So we are working to encourage the families to allow their child to receive the ESL program supports.
And as a follow-on question to that, I mean, I presume that we believe it's best for the student to participate in the program, and that's why we're offering it.
Right.
And, and I wonder if there's some misconception on the part of those parents that need to be addressed. So, you know, you talked about some of them, you know, just 12 seems like a big number of students that could benefit from the extra help and may, and maybe a better explanation and whether it's the language communication with the parents, whether that's a barrier? And if, if that is, if there's something we can do to better communicate with parents?
Yes, absolutely. Our new supervisor, Judy Diaz, is working diligently to bring the families along in our ESL Family Literacy Night last month at Hammershold. She, she did get a few parents to reconsider their decision, and she's working on the rest.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
And she actually is an ES, was a former ESL student herself.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so thank you so much, Dr. Bulleye. That's a lot of good information. You mentioned at the top about, you know, COVID, about comparison, about learning loss and things like that. Are there, maybe you can provide us at another time, but a comparison between, let's say, 2019?
Mm-hmm.
Where we were and then now, and see what are the areas that you're addressing?
Yeah, so, so the window for testing for Start Strong just ended a couple weeks ago. So we don't have the results yet, so we will be getting them, and I will be back to present that for you. The problem with these two assessments in comparing is that our L population is rather transient, and, you know, there are a lot of factors that go into whether or not a student can demonstrate mastery of the English language at any particular time. So to compare our current Ls with data from two, three years ago, it's not really comparable.
Okay.
But, but that being said, and, and you know, those factors are the country they came from, if they had interrupted learning, if they were literate in their home language, you know, all kinds of factors. But we are ensuring that our students are making adequate yearly progress, that's for sure.
Okay, and then that sounds, you know, it's for the Dynamic Learning Maps, are they more of a stable population in the district that you couldn't do a comparison?
Um, I guess we could, we could provide data on a student's personal growth, but to compare a cohort of students with disabilities that could range from a variety of-
No, I understand.
-to a different cohort of different students?
It's just hard to quantify it, I guess.
Right.
You know, I'm sure it's really well thought out, and if you could see the detail, but by looking at it and not knowing where they were before, at least kids with similar special needs, it would help us to better understand, at least for me, I would better understand. Thank you. And Jeff?
We have a couple of questions. You can be backing off Ms. Reese's comments. This is a lot of data and a lot of great data points. What, what system of measurement would one use? The only variable I could think of is time. So the time that the students in the program would have a direct correlation, or it should as a measurable impact on the efficacy of the program, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So, so with that-
For the, for the ESL program?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so with what Ms. Reese was saying, it seems like there should be data points that should present that comparison pretty clearly.
For individual students, but again, it's a transient population. Many students have moved out, new students have moved in. So just to compare a cohort of, of the Ls in East Brunswick?
Well, it wouldn't be a cohort, it would be an individual student-
Individuals, yes, we could certainly show that.
-based on the amount of time that that student was in the program, to what progress they were measurably made.
Individually, yes, we could do that.
That, I think that's where the value of this.
Okay.
So, so we'll have two follow-ups to that. From what you see in this, what are your takeaways? You know, I don't mind data being put, put down, but I really am more interested in how you then quantify it based on what you've learned from this.
I think that the DLM data, Ms. Bond and her team, and we're working collaboratively with her, I think there's great opportunity to narrow down the professional learning for the staff so that they can adequately and better meet the needs of the students who are working, who are with them in their classrooms every day. So I think that's a great opportunity for us. I also think that regarding our ESL program, you know, our new supervisor is young and eager, and we're looking at new ways to take a look at the curriculum, the instructional practices that are happening when the students are being pulled out, looking at data with the ESL teachers, school by school, to ensure that the students are meeting that adequate yearly progress, and to mitigate any factors that may be impeding that, such as attendance, other issues at home, so forth.
The uncontrollable issues, I, yeah, I appreciate that. Then, when you say opportunities, do you have all the tools, do you think that are necessary at this point, and you just need to-
We need schools to stay open.
-using your words, opportunities, and putting, putting that together?
Yes. We need schools to stay open and children to be in class.
All right, fair enough. And then the last, last question I have, regarding students that are not part of the program through family opting out, is the, and they, and the students want to be mainstreamed by parent's recommendation, what's the impact in the classroom? Is there extra time then being spent for those students, on those students, to assure comprehension? And is that impacting the minutes in the classroom through specific attention that is not being given to the classroom at large?
In our secondary schools, we have ESL teachers pushing in to support the students so that they can access the content. In our elementary schools, the students are receiving the ESL services on a pull-out basis, and basic beginners are getting a double dose of that pull-out ESL.
But they're, but they're opting out of the program. These students who are opting out are still getting that?
The students who are, no, correct, sorry, my misunderstanding. The students who parents have refused support are in the classrooms, and if there's a second teacher in the classroom, they are being provided support there. Some of these students are hanging on their own, just fine.
But we're adding resources as a result of a parent opting out?
No.
No? Okay, then I misunderstood what you said.
I misspoke, yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Students who are receiving ESL services, who are being mainstreamed into classrooms, are also receiving push-in support from an ESL teacher.
I understand, I'm talking about the students that have opted out inside a classroom.
They're not receiving any services at all.
I understand. Is the teaching style then altered in any way that allot more time to those students because of the deficiencies they have in, in comprehension? Is it changing the line of the curriculum or the line of the instructional lesson plan as a result of an individual student not understanding nor receiving the resources that we, that we're making available by choice?
Well, I mean, certainly, I think our teachers are adept at differentiating to meet the needs of all the students in their classroom. All students, most students come with some kind of need that could be supported, that would need to be supported. I can't, I can't tell you right now, I don't have the names of the 12, nor the impact.
I'd be curious to know.
Uh-huh.
I mean, are we changing the lang, is a teacher teaching twice, once for the comprehension of the entire class and once for the comprehension of this individual who's chosen no resource and help?
I'm sure she's providing extra support, but she's not teaching in any other language than English. So she's not teaching it twice. She may be providing extra help, but that's what our teachers do.
Thank you.
On that access for ELLS, for the ethnic background, the race, I don't see, India? Where are they from, if they aren't compatible?
Uh, these are the-
Indian, Asian?
Yes, these are our students and the profile that they have. Our largest language speaking is Arabic, and then Chinese, uh, Spanish and then Chinese.
Under ethnicity, though? Indian students fit under East Asians?
I believe they are. That is, they're-
Very interesting. Okay. Thank you for the question.
Okay, anyone else? Good questions, guys. Good presentation, Joyce, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said, we'll be back soon with the Start Strong data, and I'll be happy to pull those other pieces for you.
Okay, now we have the good of the cause of the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing member of the public to express herself on school matters of community interest. Public participation is limited to three-minute duration. Is there any one wishing to speak to the board?
It's a lot, it's a lot of pressure. This is your one time.
No?
There's something for it to say.
Well, in that case, I'm going to close the good of the cause of the public. Consider it closed. Moving on to our agenda tonight, before I ask for a motion to combine items 1 to 3 in the Board of Education items, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items 1 through 3?
So move.
Moved by LeWu, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? There's a roll call vote. The secretary please call the roll.
Just a question, seconded by-
Me.
Mark Carrangelo, sorry.
Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. On the financial services agenda, before I ask for a motion combining items 1 through 10, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Mark Carrangelo. Is there any discussion? There's a roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask for a motion to combine items 1 and 2 in our human resources agenda, is there anything anyone would like separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items 1 and 2?
So move.
Moved by Heather?
Second.
Second by Mark Carrangelo. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. On our student services agenda, before I ask for a motion to combine items 1 through 6, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items 1 through 6?
So move.
Moved by LeWu, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Susanna?
I just had a quick question on the, the North Brunswick pool. I kind of remember that we always used the, the one in Middlesex County.
We did, but they did not open their pool.
Oh, so it's closed?
Right.
So that's why we're using this one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
They planned to in the future, but, but they have not yet.
Okay. Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our transportation services agenda tonight, can I please have a motion for that item?
So move.
Moved by LeWu, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause of the board, we're going to start with Nora, who is so dedicated. She came here tonight. How is everything going?
Pretty well.
Quiet, quiet week, but how have things been going the last few weeks since we saw you last?
Um, pretty busy, college stuff, part of what I was going to talk about. I did just want to say congratulations to Mr. Winston, Ms. Reese, and President Becker on your reelection. Good news. I also wanted to say we're, congrats to our fall sports teams, I know Dr. Valesky touched on that. We've had a fantastic season all around, lots of GMC championships, and wish everyone luck going into the states and playoffs that are going on this week and next week, and hope we can continue our season through that. And then, as I was saying with colleges, we had the November 1st was a deadline for a lot of colleges for early action and early decision, and I know some people have received some acceptances and commitments and all that kind of stuff, so it's pretty exciting to see all that happening. As a senior, seeing your friends figure out where they're going the next four years is pretty cool, and seeing everyone get settled in and begin to understand the process of applying a little more. And then I wanted to talk about, we had Spirit Week and Homecoming, the week before break, yeah, the parent-teacher conference week. We had a wonderful showing for Spirit Week, lots of participation in all the, each day. And our Homecoming event was fantastic, we had it on the baseball turf field at the high school. It was a little chilly, but it wasn't too bad, and we had over 1,000 people in attendance, and I was told it was one of the biggest that's ever happened, if not the biggest. And I received a lot of good reports on that, and that was something that I was thrilled about going into the school year and being able to plan that with everyone and just give everyone a way to get back together and have fun.
It must feel great to be able to do things like- It must feel great to be able to do things like Homecoming and... As far as the college applications go, you'll, you'll have a real sigh of relief when they're, when they're done.
Yes.
But at the same time, then it gets a little nerve-wracking waiting for the results to come in. But by then, senioritis has set in and it's okay.
What it is, it is by that point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much, as always, a great report. Gives us a real flavor for what's going on at the high school. Any Committee Reports Information Items miscellaneous, good of the cause to the board? LeWu and Susanna?
Susanna go first.
Susanna and LeWu.
Susanna go first.
Susanna?
Okay, that's fine, either way. So I just wanted to report on the Policy Committee. We met on October 26th and reviewed the policies that were on the agenda this evening. So I want to thank the committee for their active participation in reviewing. I think it was 90-plus pages of, of policies that we went through. But one thing I did want to point out is that, one of the things we discussed is kind of, you know, how these policies are challenging to read for parents. And the definitions are, are, you know, kind of, there's, there's just a lot of words and terms in there. So one suggestion that we came up with was to look into whether there can be a master set of definitions to help streamline some of the documents and make it easier for, for parents. So Mr. Juliana is going to look into that to see if our legal service that, that provides these policies, Strauss Esme, whether they could pull out these definitions so that there's a single place they can go to, to understand what these terms mean.
Thank you, Susanna. Thank you, I, I know that meeting was, was long and, and required a lot of work. So thank you to those who were in attendance. LeWu, I believe you were next?
Yes. So on October 20th, Curricula Committee had a meeting. I should say, the meeting was fantastic. First, I want to thank President Becker, Mr. Winston, Dr. Valesky, and Dr. Bowley attended the meeting. So when Dr. Bowley asked me if we can have more teachers come to the meeting, I agree this idea. As a result, the meeting has 40 attendees. So possibly the most attended meeting, committee meeting. The meeting was great. And so because, I, the reason why I want more teachers attending the meeting because is I want to hear more opinion from the teacher who has firsthand knowledge in the classroom in our school district. So that will help us know more about what is happening in our school. That will help us to make better decision. So that's, meeting was really, really great. During the meeting, we first reviewed the block scheduling. Since at the beginning of this school year, the block scheduling was admin in junior high and high schools. And from whatever the teacher report, everything is under control. And I should say, everything was great. And then we talk about the math program. So, and there are so many people talking, have some different opinions about everyday math. So, and Anthony and his group introduced the EVISION, the math program for grade 6, K to 6. And I believe they will submit something for the board for approval. And Nico Tibbs and her team present the Haggerty Formological Awareness Program for, for our K, pre-K to 1. The program was great, so I believe people will like it. So the, the drawback for having more people for the meeting was the meeting was too long. I realized, I really said Dr. Valesky was really tired after such a long day. So I said, I have to cut off the, the meeting time. But overall, the meeting was great. And I want to apologize to Dr. Valesky since he had to drive so long to get home. So after a long meeting, I'm sorry for that. But next time, I still want to have bigger meetings.
Part of the job, but thank you.
He said pack your clothes, you can sleep over at his house next time.
It's better than sleeping in the office, that's for sure.
I'm still girlfriend. Very good report, thank you so much. Barbara, then Susanna again.
Just wanted to mention that Happy Diwali for today is the Holiday of Lights, Festival of Lights and life and goodness and love and togetherness. And it's a very heartwarming holiday. Wish best wishes to all our families who celebrate.
It's lovely, thank you. Susanna?
I forgot, I have another committee report and that's the Human Relations Council. Just wanted to mention that they had the Unity Walk on October 25th. And I want to thank Dr. Valesky and President Becker for attending and providing greetings, very brief greetings to the, to the group. And it was just a really lovely event where people came together and we had a representative from the high school, a junior, right?
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal. She came to sing the-
National.
National anthem and it was just phenomenal. So I just want to thank Luke for, for finding her. I don't know where you found her, but she was fabulous.
She was amazing.
Yeah.
Luke was a voice coach behind.
Real known fact.
Wonderful, yeah. And, and I know several of the other board members were there as well. So it was a really nice gathering of the community in a, you know, walk in unity. So thank you.
All right, Susanna, I was going to also talk about that. It really was, was, there was just such a good feeling there that night. The young woman from the high school who sang "The Star-Spangled Banner", which is known as one of the hardest songs in the world to sing, right? Acapella, perfectly on key. It was one of the most meaningful renditions of the song I've ever heard. It, it, actually, I know this is going to sound corny, but I almost felt like a tear coming. It was, she, besides the fact that she had an incredible voice, she put so much heart into it. So it was, it was a very nice event. And I want to thank the Human Relation Council for all the hard work they put in all year round. This is a big event for them, but they do a great job of being there for the community, reaching out to all different facets of the community. So you all to be commended. Thank you. Anyone else? Heather?
I just wanted to say, having, with this break and just with the number of sporting events that have been going on, I'm spending a lot of time, because my older are in the high school, spending a lot of time with students that are applying to colleges. And it's been really nice to hear. And I just wanted to give thanks to the Guidance Department and the staff because what I'm hearing from students that are going through the application process is that they feel supported and confident in the support. They may not feel confident in where they're going to get in or if they've made the right choices yet or where they want to choose, but they do seem to feel very confident in the support that they're receiving. And, and I also wanted to say thank you to the staff because that November 1st deadline brings a lot of recommendations due. And being surrounded by people and myself writing recommendations where I am, it is a ton of work. And every student that I spoke to was so happy with, you know, the teacher's support and the number of teachers that were happy to write their letters of recommendation. So it seems as though the process is going really well for students that are, you know, just coming off of the Start Strong testing and PSATs. But the upperclassmen seem confident and will support it, so thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else? Okay. We do have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meeting, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Moved by Jeff, second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Have a great evening, drive home safe. And we're in closed session, thank you.